Awesome. All right, well, I will let our first speaker of the night take it away, Emily.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. My name is Emily Taylor. I am a junior at Diamond High School here in Anchorage. And I'm also an Indigenous student, so I would like to start out with the land acknowledgement. As our schools here in Anchorage are built on the ancestral and unceded traditional territories of the Dennehena peoples, these Indigenous people of this land, as well as the Indigenous people all around Alaska, never surrendered rights or resources to Russia or the United States. Tonight, we acknowledge this not only in thanks to the Indigenous communities who have stewarded, cared for, and held relationship with this land for generations, but also in recognition of the historical and ongoing legacy of colonialism and Indigenous struggle for self-determined nation, respect, and sovereignty. This forum was planned and hosted by young people from Alaska Youth for Environmental Action, Teen Council, and Anchorage Youth Vote. I'm also a member of Alaska Youth for Environmental Action. Tonight, we are joined by 12 school board candidates. Thank you so much to all of you who are here tonight. All candidates were invited to attend, but a few candidates either declined or had a prior engagement tonight. After the event, we will publish the responses to our lightning round questions. And now I'll pass it off to Lynette to review our format and rules. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lynette. I use she/her pronouns. I'm here with Planned Parenthood Votes Northwest and Hawaii. The rules for tonight's forum are that candidates will remain respectful at all time. Cameras must be turned on and candidates must be muted when not speaking. I will be the timekeeper for tonight and will give you a 30-second, 10-second, and zero-second warning when your time is up before meeting you. Since you have a large number of candidates tonight, we have structured the evening to maximize input from candidates in a short amount of time. First, candidates will introduce themselves, then we will move on to our lightning round of 10 / disagree questions. Next, we will have two long-answer questions that will be followed by a short word association round and one final long-answer question and closing remarks. I'll hand it over to Isabel to start us off tonight.
Hello, everybody. My name is Isabel. I use she/her pronouns. I go to Stellar Secondary School, and I belong to Teen Council. So let's start off with a brief introduction from candidates. There are four municipality-wide school board seats. All Anchorage voters vote on all four seats. We have 16 candidates running for the four seats. 12 of them are here tonight. Please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're running for school board. We will start with seat B. Mark Anthony Cox, Kelly Lessons. Mark Anthony Cox, you have one minute.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Perfect. My name is Mark Anthony Cox, and I'm your vote for seat B. B as in Bravo boy or even blessing. I stand for high-quality education that is reaching. I want you to graduate so that private students are switching back to public education. Speaking of your education, I believe that there are ways that we can improve your education. So you will need to know reading, writing, and math, or the chances like to know starting a business and handling cash. See, these are the things that I know you want to know, but first you need a school board member that can represent you. So tell your friends, family, and everyone that you know, Mark Anthony Cox, Anchorage School Board, seat B, as in Bravo. I'm an anchor school district graduate, as well as a UA graduate, became a homeowner. Then I went on to join the military. I've published two self-help books. I've spent my time in and out of Title I schools, encouraging youth and mentoring them as well. When it comes to this school board position now, it's not a position to me. It's just a way of life. I'm now the CEO of Family Charity of Alaska, and I solve food insecurity in my part-time as well. So when it comes to what we have in regards to the future, just know that I'm here on the same point of view as you. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Kelly Lessons.
That's a hard act to follow, Mark. All right. My name is Kelly Lessons. I'm a parent of two elementary students in our neighborhood school. I have a fourth grader and a kindergartner. Before I became a parent, I earned my PhD from the University of Michigan from an interdisciplinary program where I thought a lot about women's studies, ethnic studies, and the 19th century in the US. What makes me compelled to run for school board is that I am committed to improving our student outcomes by focusing on wellness, equity, and learning. And that's coming right out of my experiences advocating for our youngest students for more and equitable and evidence-based recess and lunch policies. As a parent, I was concerned about my kid coming home hungry, but at a structural level, I was thinking more about what does this mean for the last kid in the lunch line? I started calling everyone all around the district and figuring out what I could do to make things better, and I'm here to build upon that. Thanks.
All right. Amazing. So next, we will go to seat E and start off with Rachel. Rachel Blakesley, you have one minute.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Rachel Blakesley. I'm running for school board seat E. I am a mom and a former teacher, and I've been involved in public education for over a decade now. I first entered the classroom as a teacher and quickly learned how antiquated our public education system and that is, and that it truly isn't set up to serve all kids equally. And that exposure is what catalyzed my lifelong commitment to advocating for better outcomes for all students in hopes that they have the educational opportunities that they deserve. I have a dual background in environmental justice and health and education that stems from my belief that all kids and all students should have a chance to grow and develop in a healthy and supportive learning environment. And I think that backgrounds would allow me to serve the diverse needs of a really diverse student population through a holistic student-centered lens. I'm running for school board because I believe in the potential of all kids, and I want to help them realize it.
All right. Thank you. Next is Edgar Blanchford. You have one minute.
Thank you very much. My name is Edgar Blanchford. I'm a candidate for seat E, the school board. I was born in Nome. I was delivered by an Eskimo midwife in Nome. It was a different era. It was a dog team era. There was no money for me to be born in the hospital. It was also a time way before the Settlement Act and a time when most Alaska natives were subsistence hunters, fishers, or gatherers. I'm a graduate of Seward High School. I attended Nome Elementary, but I'm running because I'm very committed to education. I think this was recognized very early in my career when Governor Regan appointed me to the student loan selection committee, which evolved into the Alaska Commission of Post-Secondary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Alicia Hild. You have one minute.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Alicia Hild, and I'm ready for reelection to the Anchorage School Board, seat E. I'm a mom of three kids in Anchorage. They're kindergarten, second, and fourth. I'm the only board member with elementary-age kids, and I really value being able to bring a strong voice for parents and young children in our district. I've been a foster mom and a big brother, big sister, and continue to advocate for children in foster care. I have a deep passion for making sure all children get a great education. I was raised by a single mom. She worked a lot, but it was still a low-income home. And it was my teachers and the opportunities at school to see all the different possibilities that, you know, helped me, you know, go on to more, you know, higher education is what I ended up choosing. I have a master's in public policy, a teaching degree, and a law degree, and I land cost-benefit analysis, research, and really engaging with the community, going out, talking to kids, parents, whoever, to make sure I'm representing people well. So I hope you will vote for me for seat E. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pat Higgins. You have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Pat Higgins. I was on the school board from 2008 until 2017. When I was on the school board, we accomplished a lot of things. We got graduation rates up from low 60s to over 80%. We cut the dropout rate almost in half, and half of those kids come back every year. We expanded career technology. We cut admin costs nine years in a row. We had an audit committee that actively reviewed the school district operations, and we saved half a million dollars in one audit along with the purchasing program. What we have today is a board that's taking its direction from the Council of Great City Schools. Basically believes that their job is to move out of the way and approve what the superintendent wants. There's no audit committee. Academic results have not gone up. They've gone down before the pandemic, and they're not actively reviewing and approving all the activities. I want to follow the National School Board Association guidelines, be the voice, establish direction, and hold accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nile Williams. You have one minute.
Apologies. It looks like he is not here yet, so we can move to the next candidate.
Understood. All right. So next, we will go with seat F, in the order of Dora Wilson, Marcus Sanders, and then Dan Lauren. So starting off with Dora Wilson, you have one minute.
Thank you for taking the time to participate this evening and be here. My name is Dora Wilson. I am running for seat F for Anchorage School Board. And I am a mom of three. I have three now-young adults who've gone through the Anchorage School Board. I am a therapeutic foster parent. I've worked with kids for the past 16 years with mental health issues and behavioral issues. I have worked with our school business partnership program for the past 20 years, bringing, connecting school business partners, working as a board member as well as a school business partner. I'm a co-founder of AK Hopes and Dreams. We provide youth leadership summits to high school students free of charge to make sure that they have opportunities for financial literacy, career opportunities, all kinds of great stuff that our students actually lead us to determine what they need. And I really hope that I have the opportunity to earn your support for the school board position. I look forward to any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marcus Sanders. You have one minute.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Marcus Sanders. I was born in Alaska, raised in Alaska. Schooled in Alaska. I'm a father. I'm a pastor. I'm a mentor, and I'm a husband. I'm a former ASD employee myself. I worked at a middle school for about five or six years. I also was a TA and substitute teacher for the Anchorage School District. I've served in various mentorship programs across Anchorage. I serve as a community chaplain, Anchorage Police Department chaplain. I currently serve in the National Guard as a chaplain. I'm the second lieutenant. I'm excited to run for the school board. I hope I can earn your support on April 6th, and I believe it's time for redirection to get restructured and get our children back in the classroom. Thank you, Marcus Sanders. See you there.
Thank you. Next is Dan Lauren. You have one minute. I'll just repeat that one more time. Next up is Dan Lauren. You have one minute for an introduction.
Dan Lauren, could you unmute yourself? You have one minute for introduction.
All right. Since the microphone isn't working for Dan Lauren, we will move on and check in with him at the end. The introductions will be fixed by then. So next, we're moving to seat G, starting with Carl Jacobs and then Alyssa Vakalas. Okay, that's right. Starting off with Carl Jacobs, you have one minute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Jacobs. I am a candidate for seat G on the Anchorage School Board. A little bit about me. I've spent my professional career serving and protecting vulnerable Alaskans as an investigator and regulatory enforcement specialist, serving and protecting our seniors and our children in residential licensing facilities for youth and adults. My wife, Alicia, and I have also served as therapeutic foster parents for the last decade. The youth that we have in our home have behavioral and mental health challenges that we assist them with, and we've cared for dozens of youth over the last 10 years, and we'll have our 11th high school graduate with us upcoming May, which we're super excited about. The experience has allowed us to identify things that our district does well in addition to ways we need to improve. I'm focused on addressing career and technical education, our ongoing budgetary issues, and the educational outcome gaps that have not been addressed in the past. I'm looking forward to answering your questions tonight. Our campaign has a lot of traction and looking forward to allowing you to get to know me a little bit as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alyssa Vakalas. Thank you. You have one minute.
Hi, thank you quite a. It's Alyssa Vakalas. I am running for my third term for seat G. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to set aside all of my canned, you know, introductions and stuff like that. I was born right here in Anchorage. I graduated from Bartlett. I have four kids, three that attend Chugiak, one that attends West. When I ran for the school board, it originally was because I was a mom. I was a parent. I thought I knew everything until I didn't know everything. And the things that I have learned along the way have, I hope, translated to all kids, all means all for me, all of my kids, all of you out there in the district. I've been learning about children with figuring out their identity, suicide and depression, how education meets their needs when it isn't right now, what CTE opportunities do they want as they grow up into being adults? And I'm just supportive of our goals as a district that focus on our life, college, and career readiness. I look forward to this conversation. It's going to be a fun one. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. All right, we have two more intros, starting off with Marilyn Stewart from seat B, and then followed by Dan Lauren for seat F. So Marilyn Stewart, you have one minute.
I think you'd. Okay. I am so happy to be here. I'm looking forward to meeting Jasmine. I had an opportunity to talk with her back and forth, and so, but my name is Marilyn Stewart, and I'm running for the Anchorage School Board, seat B. And, you know, our kids are back in school from being gone for almost a year. And so I just feel that right now, you know, we need to make our focus all about them. It's time to do right by them as well. And when I mean do right, I mean, we need to start looking at how we're going to spend our dollar wisely to bring them back up to par after being gone for a year. And if anybody tell you it's going to be easy, it's not going to be easy. And we're going to have to really pay close attention to that. And then also, I want to ensure opportunities and achievements for all children. And then I want to focus on achieving the best possible results for every student within the school district. Most importantly, I have made a commitment that I will aggressively pursue parental involvement and get them involved. And so I have three grandkids in the Anchorage School District. I have one grandson.
I believe you went back on mute. Could you, the last thing you said was talking about grandchildren. Oh, I understand. Time's up. Sorry, Lynette. Just send a message. Okay. Thank you so much, Marilyn Stewart. Next, we have Dan Lauren from seat F. You have one minute.
Hi. Can you hear me now? Hello? I guess. So my name is Dan Lauren, and I have, over the last 20 years, either served on the Anchorage School Board as a non-voting member of the school board representing BTA, the Multicultural Education Advisory Committee, or the Special Education Advisory Committee. I love research, and so I've done a ton of research. Let me just try not to swear. I know this is a proper forum, but let me just say it's all about leadership. And the current school board is absolutely terrible. Some would say they really suck because they do. And I would just say that, you know, proficiency in my neighborhood elementary school is zero and zero in math and English language arts. We can do better.
All right. Thank you all. You know, I'm just reminded to be watching Lynette for your time. Okay, so now William will explain the lightning round.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Lilian Yay. I am currently a 10th grader at West Anchorage High School, and I am part of Youth Vote, and I use she/her pronouns. And the first round for tonight will be a lightning round of questions. We have 10 statements that we will ask you to either agree or disagree with. And I will read the statement and ask you to put your thumbs up for agree and thumbs down for disagree. No thumbs to the side, please. And please hold your hand up until I start asking the next question as we will be putting these answers in the Google Doc, which will be linked to the recording after the event tonight on our Facebook page. And so to start with the very first question, number one. Should we teach students about land acknowledgements and implement the practice into schools? Thank you. Number two, will you advocate for more mental health resources in schools? Number three, do you support a curriculum centered around racial and climate justice for students K through 12? Thank you. Number four, should ASD provide transportation to all schools in the district? Number six, do you support sex education inclusive of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, two-spirit, and non-binary LGBTQIA2S+ identities and experiences? Thank you. Question seven, do you think the current ASD curriculum shares true and holistic histories of Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities? Thank you. Question eight, should teachers be trained on racism and systemic racism in the education system? Thank you. Number nine, should ASD cut the number of school resource officers in larger, more diverse high schools? Thank you. Question 10, should Canvas be the new normal for ASD educational settings?
Lilian, can you repeat that one, please?
Yes, of course. Question 10, should Canvas be the new normal for ASD educational settings? Thank you. Question 11, the final question, should there be more youth voices on the school board? Thank you. And now back to Isabel, who will explain the next round of questions.
We will now go into our first round of long-answer questions. You will each have 1 minute and 30 seconds to answer the questions. Remember to watch Lynette to see when time is up, and you will be muted if you go more than 10 seconds over time. We will be rotating which seat we start with in the order of candidates.
Isabel, it would be nice. It would also be nice if you all, at some point, repeat the questions because you're assuming that everyone understands what you're saying, and that's not so. Thank you.
I understand.
Chat, too.
Yes. You can also check the questions to see.
Thank you.
We've done. Amazing. Okay. So we will start off with our first question for our long answer round. How will you work to make sure all students get equitable access to education, considering virtual and pandemic learning this past year? We'll start with E, Edgar Blanchford.
What was the last half of the question?
I will repeat the question, and you can also read it in the chat if you would like. How will you work to make sure all students get equitable access to education, considering virtual and pandemic learning this past year? You have 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Yeah, I'm an Alaska native, and I know that the Alaska Native people and other minorities or BIPOC people have been the first to be cut. That has been the tradition of the country since, for the past 200 or 300 years, which you need is a strong voice on the school board to make sure that BIPOC people are not the first to be cut. You need equity, diversity, and you need voices from different sectors of the community here in Anchorage. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, Alicia Hild.
Thank you so much. This is a great question. The first step is we've gotten a lot of influx from federal stimulus money directed directly toward addressing pandemic learning loss and the disparities in that. So the board's first responsibility is to make sure that funding goes straight to student learning and to really address that increasing gap between, you know, the high-income students receiving and have had gains during the pandemic, and low-income students who are already seeing significant losses, so that that gap is widening. Also, meeting kids where they are, making sure, you know, we really say, what steps have you missed? If it's a math skill and we try to go ahead without filling in some of those missing parts, you know, that kid's not going to be set up for success, and that requires rely on evidence-based practices, looking at what do we know works within our budget, too. Chicago just had a great study come out showing low-cost tutoring on a 1:4 ratio, improving math, a year and a half increase over that tutoring opportunity, which also comes into additional learning opportunities. So we're looking at a robust summer school program. Right now, the goal is to get to 25% of students offering it to kids, not required, but really welcoming kids back into the habit of school, right? That's a skill to get up and be engaged in learning every day, that our teachers work tirelessly to get kids on board with, and that's kind of a big challenge for them. So really doing the things that we know work and making sure we're targeting the kids most in need. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Pat Higgins. You have 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. It's a tough question because there are so many factors involved, access to different schools, access to equipment. But one of the things that equitable is that it's appropriate. We have differentiated instruction opportunities out there through computer systems so that students reading in fifth-grade level and their third grade can have material that's appropriate for that, and kids that are left behind at first grade can have reading material when they're in third grade to help catch up. We do need summer school. Summer school for elementary kids has academically advanced those kids 19%. Kids that are behind need additional resources. They need assistance to be able to move up. So that's a critical component out there. I think equal access has to do with being able to get to different school programs that you want to get involved with and making sure that those programs are opened up equally to all students. That's a serious concern right now because transportation is a real barrier towards those kids getting to those schools. But we need to study what the academic results are and see what the changes can be. Curriculum is going to be the biggest change out there at this point in time. There's the opportunity for things with online such as SAVE. These kids catch up with credits, and they can catch up quicker. Some of these kids that are falling behind go to SAVE school, and they graduate before their regular class. So there's opportunities to help kids catch up, and we need to use all the resources we do have available to try to accomplish that.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel Blakesley. You have 1 minute and 30 seconds.
So the first question is addressing the learning loss that happened because of the pandemic. And there are a lot of new, great research studies that have come out that show us that there are lots of opportunities for expanded learning time that we can incorporate to help facilitate that catch-up piece. So extended school days or more structured after-school programs, summer school, and tailored, really hyper-focused, differentiated one-on-one tutoring has also shown to be incredibly effective, not so much in an ad hoc way, but but really frequent one-on-one tutoring consistently on a weekly basis in extremely small groups. And then in addition to that, around the equity piece, I think it's really important that moving on from that, addressing the loss of learning, that we recognize that that students were behind and weren't being served equitably long before COVID, and that opportunity gaps existed along lines of race and class before this pandemic even hit. And if we want to really focus on supporting students, we need to make sure that we're not approaching education through a vacuum. They were not just teaching students how to test and focused on standardized testing, but they were really focused on every interconnected part of education and what improves student outcomes. So social-emotional resilience, culturally relevant instruction that represents students' identities and the content they can see, and relevant 21st century learning skills that really provide them with the opportunities to thrive.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from CF, starting with Marcus Sanders, then Dan Lauren, Dora Wilson. Marcus Sanders, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's a very good question. I know we're going to need some longer school days when we get back. You know, our kids are gonna, we're gonna have some children that are going to be way behind from this 331 days that we missed of math and reading. And so we're gonna need some longer school days. I know summer school is going to be a major play to have children catch up. And, you know, we're gonna have to have some tutors and some TAs in line to meet those needs for our children and making sure that we have the technology to meet their needs. Transportation is big, making sure those kids will be able to get to where they need to be to be in summer school programs, those summer school classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Lauren, you have one minute and 30 seconds. Dan Lauren, you are muted. It was on for a second.
Muted twice, can you hear me?
Yes, no.
Okay, great. And so if you've been involved as a volunteer, a community member, a teacher, a janitor, a school board member in public education, you do well know that the solution's out there. It's politics. You know, Pat Higgins, I remember he was on school board for nine years, and my God, he fought politics. You know, he had a lot of great ideas from best practices, but to fight his colleagues on the school board was extremely difficult. He did a good job, as best a job as he could, but it's all about politics, and it's absolutely terrible. You know, we're not a transformational school district. You know, we bring up the rear end, but we don't have to. We have a lot of talent in our schools. We have students that are very smart, we have a lot of really great teachers. Here's one, we have principals. By elementary school, make it the first-year apprentice principal. And, you know, probably one of the top three or four most challenging schools, and we get the novice first-year principal. And how ridiculous is that? It's just common sense and leadership and get the politics out of the school district. Get it out of the classroom, get it out of the school board. We could be great, get rid of the politics.
Thank you. Next is Dora Wilson, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
So regarding getting equitable access to education based on this past year's virtual learning and pandemic learning, to help students catch up, definitely after-school programs, the lower the class size or one-on-one, small-group kind of teaching is really relevant and important for our students to catch up on whatever kind of learning to help elevate them and bring them to their success. Summer school options are fantastic as well, but I think this is an opportunity. We were forced to do things differently because of the pandemic, both educationally and in the workforce, and we've done things very well. And the educators have really stepped up and learned how to teach online, learned how to reach their students. So for some students, that has worked. I think it's an opportunity for us to figure out what other ways we can work on educating our students rather than just going back to what the old normal was, create a new normal. Take this opportunity to do things a little bit differently, to reach out to more of our students, to more of our families, particularly our families of color that whose students are not being as successful in school as shown by the graduation rates. Really take an opportunity to outreach to those community organizations, those community leaders, and find out what we can do as a school district and as a community to help elevate those students and help them find their success.
Thank you. Next, we'll be hearing from Seat G, starting with Alyssa Valklis. And then after that is Carl Jacobs. Alyssa Valklis, you are up.
Alyssa Vagelis. Glad we did this a couple nights ago, too. It's all good. So, you know, I think one of the biggest things is, as we look at this year and the next probably two to three years, it's going to be the proper use of our federal funds that have come in. It is helping what could have been a nightmare for our budget. But one of the interesting things that I don't know that people really think about is we can want all of the teachers and the technology and stuff like that, but all of those are in short supply. We can have, money's great, but if you don't have the, you know, resource out there to buy, it's going to be a problem. I do support what I believe is going to be a robust summer school program. A lot of Ts, transportation, we got to get our kids to those programs. We can't depend on the parents and the families because everybody's trying to get back to work. Tutors, you know, some of these kids need much smaller groups, let's do it. Time, we've got to give them time, more than just some of the limited opportunities that they've had. And obviously, technology, we got to keep working with our families to make sure that they have what they need every step of the way. We've been doing it for a year, we can keep doing it. But one of the things we need to do is keep the learning opportunities. For some kids, they may need to still stay at home for whatever family reasons or health reasons, and we need to be able to support that in a meaningful way. It's one thing to, you know, learn how to do this over the last year, but now we need to make it work. And for those that are ready to be in class, we need to do the same thing and give our kids the opportunities that they need for their best learning opportunities and don't try and fit them all into the same box.
Thank you. Next is Carl Jacobs.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think first it's good to acknowledge that the achievement gaps have occurred well before this year, and the pandemic has just increased those and magnified and brought attention to the issue, which is great. I think first we need a top-down approach to the board. We need to have, ensure that they function correctly and they're supporting and holding the administration accountable as is appropriate to ensure adequate results. To me, that means we need better engagement and follow-through. Superintendent Bishop, for example, has been in tears at multiple school board meetings over the past year and has indicated she hasn't always felt supported by the current school board. That's a problem and a symptom of dysfunction. We need to make sure that we're electing folks who can do the job and can work with everyone on the board and are best representing all students. And we also need to support our youth. We need to recognize that mental health services are going to be key, and the Anchorage School District should be partnering with our community as well as our local, state, and federal elected officials to ensure that youths are recouping and repairing from the long year that they've just experienced in the learning loss. I think that the early data available seems to indicate that the strategies, which typically promote student success, will help mitigate the learning loss. That does mean small class sizes, one-on-one instruction, small groups, tutoring. All those things should be utilized using our federal funding that we've received. Unfortunately, we've used some of our federal funding to fund 200 teacher positions, and so we don't have as much to work with as we should, and so we have some work to do there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Seat B, starting with Kelly Lessons, then Marilyn Stewart, then Mark Anthony Cox. First up is Kelly Lessons, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
Great, thank you so much. This is a really important question, and it gets to what we are capable of becoming, I think. I want to use this as an opportunity. We're going to assess student equity and equitable access to education. We need to figure out where our students and their families are, and that begins by asking the right questions. Who needs what, so we know how to allocate the resources that we need to do. So that means, what are our, are there additional students who are facing homelessness? Do they have additional nutritional needs? One of the reasons that we sent everybody back to school was that we know that they need social and emotional support, so let's make sure that we give them what they need in that capacity. The second tier is probably assessing those learning gaps. And so here, we can do the summer school, we can focus on tutoring, we can focus on small group learning, and now we can start to think a little bit more bigger, more broadly. Do we need to reconceptualize the school day, the school year? Should we talk about year-round school? Let's talk about promoting preschool to, that was my timer. Let's think about preschool, let's think about small class sizes, both for the really young ones and then also through, you know, grades four through 12. Let's focus on evidence-based instruction and excellent, high-quality curriculum materials and project-based learning and making sure that our students are engaged. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Marilyn Stewart, you have one minute and 30 seconds. Marilyn Stewart, I believe you are still muted.
I think you guys are muting me on that end. So anyway, I was just saying that I heard a lot of wonderful things. I think no matter who gets on the school board, that they will do a very wonderful job of serving our kids. But the main thing that I would like for them or myself to focus on is that, you know, the kids been gone for over a year, and then you're looking at these coming back, you're looking at the ages, their faith, their races. And when you talk about equity, to me, when I hear that word, I think about, it's just making sure that equal opportunities for achievements are going to be available for all. And I would support that during a summer school program, maybe a year-round program for the kids, and identifying what those needs are, that those kids are going to be coming to us. I hope that we take that money and make sure it is spent wisely in order to deal with the different issues that we're going to be faced. And most important is that no matter who get on the school board, you got to get the parents involved.
Thank you. Next is Mark Anthony Cox.
And on that note of getting the parents involved, we need to understand that there's a lot of internal work that has to happen first because in order for equity to happen, we have to understand the word. So equality is just giving you all a laptop because we have money to give you all a laptop. Equity is recognizing some of you have laptops, some of you have laptops that don't have the processing power in order to deal with the virtual environment. So we need to be able to have these conversations, but in order to even have these conversations with you, we need your trust. And so the trust comes from us as leadership, being transparent, being available, being flexible to you. And that's where contemporary leadership comes in because sometimes for leaders that we have had in the school board past, they're kind of hardened to this idea of this is how education goes and there's no other way. So I hope to offer that for you. And so when it comes to the virtual environment, I hope that in times forward that we can consider the idea of this hybrid learning. So for you, Isabel, you're currently, was it stellar? So Stella, you understand that you have the opportunity to go to another school for one class or whatnot. And that right there for other schools, think about the idea of if virtual learning is working for you, you'd be home. And then you get to do the CTE class or some type of vocational training. And then that's where you get your social, emotional, learning time, and then you come back home. And so we just need to allocate resources for that. Very early in the campaign, I was talking about how Title I schools, once I had the opportunity to talk to students, they weren't getting the food necessary to eat. So then I proposed, why don't we have transportation go to the bus stops, and it worked out. So think about these things and unique contemporary leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for everyone and your answers. We'll now move on to our second question. A 2020 Gallup survey shows that one in six Generation Z identifies as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, two-spirit, non-binary. So that overall is called LGBTQIA+. How would you make sure that they have resources and feel supported and are safe in their schools? We'll start with CF, Dan Lauren. Dan Lauren, I believe you are muted, and also.
So put that mute back up, would you? I don't know, come on. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for the question, that's an easy question. You know, focus on students and children's academic, social, and emotional needs. It really is all about culture, high expectations, transparency, and accountability. You know, what religious beliefs you have, what color of your skin, what sexual orientation you have. It's fine. Our job is to help the young people grow into older people successfully. And, you know, I gotta get back to the, you know, what I've seen for the last 20 years on the school board. It's politics. Behind the scenes, it's absolutely terrible. Now, Mark Anthony Cox, I think you would do a very good job. Hopefully, the bright lights would not, or drinking the ASD water would not make you like all the other school board members that talk a lot, you know, kind of like Charlie Brown. And you would actually do something, okay? But, but look at the academic results, look at the cubic apps. It's ridiculous, and it's politics.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Dora Wilson.
If our youth don't feel emotionally or physically safe, then learning becomes extremely difficult. So making sure that our students all, and I do mean all, feel supported, feel safe. We have the opportunities and the education going to our educators regarding our LGBTQIA kids, regarding our kids that are struggling because of their ethnicity, their language, there, for whatever reason. We need to make sure that our educators are educated enough in social-emotional learning and trauma-informed care, in just accepting all of our students and teaching our students to accept others. We definitely need to be able to provide that emotional and mental health support to our students, to all of our students.
Thank you. Next is Marcus Sanders, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you so much, a very good question. I agree with Dora on that last one. If our kids have a safe place, they have emotional and mental support from the educators and staff, we can provide a safe place or a safe space for our kids while they're in their learning space. But first, that respect piece has to start at home first. And I believe in having a zero tolerance for bullying and not respect for others in school. So that respect piece needs to happen at home first and making sure that our educators are pushing those policies of respecting each other. And if you have a happy and safe kid in the school, they'll be very, very, very effective. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, you'll go to Seat G, starting with Carl Jacobs, then Eliza Valklis. And we'll start with Carl Jacobs.
Great, thank you. So this is a personal issue for Alicia, and I'll share a little bit about why briefly. As therapeutic foster parents, we are one of the minority homes in town that accept and are willing to foster youth who fall into this community. Not even all foster parents are willing to take youth who identify as LGBTQIA+. And it's a symptom of our society at some point that we need to continue to educate and work with folks to make everyone more tolerant and make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible. I will say that as a candidate, I have been surprised to find out that there are folks who are actively looking to ensure candidates are elected to the board who aren't in favor of providing a welcoming environment to all Anchorage School District students. And it's disappointing, and so we've got work to do. I am dedicated to providing that environment for our youth. I think we need to work on things like anti-bullying and make sure that youths who are feeling discriminated against or as I've seen firsthand, youths who return home after a school day, you know, upset because they don't feel a part of their educational system, do feel welcome and that we are adhering to the goal of ASD, to providing excellent education for every student. We need to work with youth to identify specific needs and policies that we need to implement. And again, I think it boils down to follow-through and working with the administration to meet our core mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Eliza Valkalis. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Elisa Vakalis. I'm having fun. Thank you. This is, you know, kind of like Carl said, you know, a personal question. And I agree with a lot of the sentiments and that other candidates have already talked about, about safe space and the mental health supports. I do think that in this question, I'd like to just say it's an ASD can fix it kind of a thing, but it's not. This is a community thing. This is a family thing. This is, it's bigger than just ASD. I will be the first one to admit that when I got on the board six years ago, this was a very, very new thing to me that I had to do a lot of learning about. And I had to do a lot of introspective learning and I've done that. But I don't think it really, really sunk in deep until I had one of my youngest angels going through this and trying to understand it and figuring out what he needed. And it wasn't, when I started looking into the community, I got afraid for him. And it's been a challenge. And so I do think that our community needs to open up. I think that, you know, it needs to be bigger than ASD. Our kids need to feel safe, not just at home, but in the community. They need to feel safe at school. There absolutely no doubt, you know, discipline, zero tolerance, all of that, you know, needs to be a part of it. You know, mental health for, you know, just, we all need it. All means all. Thank you, Dora. All means all. And I've said that over and over and I'll say it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to Seat B, starting with Marilyn, Marilyn Stewart, then Mark Anthony Cox, then Kelly Lessons. I'm starting with Marilyn Stewart. You have one minute thirty seconds.
I'm the great-great-granddaughters of slaves. There have been two books written about my family. I grew up in the South. I dealt with racism. And I'm just going to make this plain and simple. I have zero tolerance for any form, shape of racism. It will not be tolerated. We have children in our school that's going to be from ages, different faith, different races. Our job, and simply our job, is to educate them. Give them the equal opportunity for achievements that's going to be available for all and not for some. When I tell you I have zero tolerance, I have zero tolerance. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Anthony Cox. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Thank you, Isabel. So when it comes to this topic, we have to understand that we were all youth at one point, or maybe we still consider ourselves youth. And if it wasn't for our families and the people we were around, they shaped us. We were clay essentially. And as time went on, the views of other people and the values of other people imprinted into us to who we are today. Were a culmination of the events that we've been through. So what we can see with this movement of the LGBTQIA plus is that there has been a lot of influence that was not traditionally happening in the families when families weren't absent. Like when it came to my nineties, we had the latchkey parenting. And then moving on, now we have virtual parenting. Here's an iPad, just ingest some material. So what we're seeing is the effects of, it starts at the home. You change the family, you change the world. And so when it comes to what we do as school board members, yes, we have our personal values and beliefs. But we're meant to be advocates, meaning voices for those who are without a voice. And that includes you as students. So whatever you identify as, we're here to make sure that the most valuable resource we can give you is preparing you for secondary education, higher learning, and for making you into the best adults ever. Because eventually you'll be the next generation to assume this position and you'll have to talk for someone else. So just make sure that when it comes to your leader, understand that they, they're people too and they have their values. But what is the bigger cause? And the bigger cause is to serve you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Lessons. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Great, starting my timer. Okay, so the question is specifically about how do we, how are we sure that students have resources and feel supported and safe? So the resources that I think our LGBTQ extended community need to have include counselors to support their mental health. They need to have curriculum. And I like to say that the curriculum used to offer both windows out into the world and doors. So as a historian, I think it's fundamentally important that all of our students see themselves in the, in the stories that we choose to tell and that they see the world. So we can make sure, for example, we can teach tolerance by showing how LGBTQ individuals and movements and, I don't know, institutions have, will, have been a part of the fabric of our national history and have function in global history as well. As far as safety, we need to make sure that by golly, they have safe places to change and use the restrooms. I, I think that that's kind of been a political issue, but the fundamental thing is that students do need to be safe in schools. So they need resources and they need structures. You know, I want to borrow from a parent that I heard on the radio the other day. So I want to amplify her words. And when we look at a plant, if that plant is wilting, we don't say what's wrong with the plant. We say, what do we do to support that plant? What's, what about the water, the soil, the pot and the light? So let's make sure we have those resources for all of our kids.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from CE, starting with Alicia Hildy, followed by Pat Higgins, now Williams, Kate Blakesley, and Edgar Blanchard. So first up, Alicia Hildy. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Thank you so much. You know, making sure children feel safe at school is incredibly important to me. Parents trust that the school district is going to keep their child safe, that their child's going to feel safe because that's an access point to learning, right? I come from a trauma-informed background. Our family has that as part of our family. And when your mind isn't settled, when you don't feel, you know, when you have threats coming in at towards you, whether other people think they're real or not, right? If you feel it, then that makes it hard for you to access learning. So really talking about looking at through our climate-connected services, seeing how children are feeling, making sure we have adults trained. Prior to the pandemic, I taught middle school band on a volunteer basis. My students had a large, I mean, they were representative of our, our entire district. And there was a zero tolerance policy. My students know that each one of them has their own inherent worth, whether the other kids like everything about them or not. And, you know, there was no negative talk about another person allowed, right? Really just honoring the worth of the people we work with and learn with. That comes down to professional development and professionalism in teaching practices. And then focusing on making sure we have the counselors to support our students coming in. And those one-on-one relationships that, you know, you look back and it was that one connection to a teacher that really helped you through navigating not just the social aspects of education, but, you know, getting on a great track for life.
Thank you. Next is Pat Higgins. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Thank you. It's a question very important to me. I came to Alaska in 1983 from Louisiana, where I marched against discrimination. I came up here to bring my kids up to this education system and to lead that environment that I left. And glad I did, no regrets. Today, when I got on the school board in 2008, I was just as committed then as I was now. I remember how proud I was with all the high school students with the Day of Silence, who would be quiet during that day to be symbol of the NGBTQ and the other issues and to recognize their voices being silenced. And, and I thought that was outstanding. Had some school board members didn't support it, but we did as a whole and I'm proud of it. When there was a problem on the radio, we had Dave Stern and Bernadette, somebody, out there bashing away on this group, talking about bathrooms and they all. Administration was silent, other school board was silent. I got on the radio with them, backed them off, told them that, look, these teachers have their own bathroom. They have this, this is ridiculous. We're dealing with federal law. These are our kids you're attacking. And they backed off. We need a voice out there for these people because their voice isn't heard otherwise. And that's what the board needs to be doing today.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Blakesley. You have one minute thirty seconds.
Sound okay? For this group?
Okay, thank you. This is a great question. And I'm just going to start by saying that all of our candidates here have really great answers. And I think a key message, that there are lots of interconnected components to making sure that our LGBTQ plus students do feel safe and supported. And it happens, it should happen at all levels. For one, it should happen at the level of adults and leadership. So we need to make sure that teachers and school leaders are trained in cultural competence and identity-based inclusion to help reduce misconceptions and stereotypes of students that are often harmful. And to make sure that the attitudes and actions of our leadership, of those who are really supporting our students every day on the front lines, are respectful and inclusive and that we're constantly oriented in a learning mindset ourselves as leaders, responsible for the safety of all kids. And we need to make sure that we're also reducing misconceptions and stereotyping and imagery in content that we're showing kids. We need to invest in more counselors and mental health supports, like many candidates have said, to support our students directly. I think that we need to invest a lot in supporting victims of bullying and really addressing bullying publicly and making sure that it's publicly affirmed, that that kind of action and treatment is harmful and unacceptable. And to implement policies that really address and effectively address that. And I think that we need to make sure that education itself includes curriculum that celebrates LGBTQ plus identities in communities, that the books they're reading, that the authors that, that are writing those books, that the leaders and the people that they're learning.
Thank you. Next is Edgar Blanchard. You have one minute thirty seconds.
One minute and thirty seconds. I think the, the number one thing that the Anchorage School Board can do is to respect each other and set an example for the community. I don't think we should allow ourselves to be pulled apart by special interest groups that copy the tactics of Lord or 48 special interest groups. I think Alaska went through a dramatic change with the construction of the Trans-Alaska Pipeline when people began to migrate to Alaska and brought with them their cultural values and their standards. Those standards, I think, took Alaska back into a difficult time. And I think Alaskans today are still trying to get out of those standards that were set by the people who migrated to Alaska. Yes, a lot of them have left, but there is still some of those values that had brought up, you know, discrimination, rampant, open discrimination against different types of people. Because that's how they did it and how they were taught to believe in other parts of the country, whether it was Tennessee or Kentucky or Colorado or Mississippi or Louisiana or Massachusetts. I don't think Alaska should go back into a different era and be a copycat. And I think the school board has to set the example and not allow itself to be bullied by any particular special interest group because it serves that special interest group's purposes, not ours, not the Alaskan people. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to pass it on to Abby to explain our next round.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm a part of teen council. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a junior at West High School. So we're going to move into our word association round now. So all candidates should have some blank pieces of paper to write on and a marker. I will say a word and you will write down whatever comes to mind when you hear that word. I'll give you five seconds to write it down and then I'll count to three and ask you to hold your paper up to the camera. And I will also have a paper with a word on it. So the first word, hopefully this is not backwards, is equity. Okay, so hopefully that's enough time for you all to hold up your word. We're waiting on maybe one or two people. Awesome. Okay. I'll now move on to our second word, which is school resource officers or SROs. SROs or school resource officers. Okay, thank you. And now we have our final word, which is student. Awesome. Okay, I believe that is everyone. Thank you for doing that. And I'll now pass it on to Emily.
Hi, again, everyone. Like I said, my name is Emily Taylor and I'm a junior at Diamond High School. We are going to be closing out the night with one more long answer question and any closing statements candidates would like to say. You will have two full minutes to answer this question. So the question is, school board members need to advance the priority, needs, concerns, and opportunities of the students in the district. How will you hold yourself accountable to the students of ASD K-12? And we're starting with Seat G. It's Elisa Valkalis. Sorry, I botched that too. And then moving to Carl Jacobs after that.
Thank you. Elisa Vakalis. One of the biggest ways to hold ourselves accountable, there's a couple of different ways to do it. First is talking to the students, that good two-way communication, making sure that we understand where they're at, what they're feeling, what their needs are, making sure that we're getting to all of the students, even the ones that, you know, often don't feel heard, getting out there. We need to understand, you know, from a board level, where are they at? Where is their education at? What supplements do they need? What resources do they need? How do we meet, you know, all of their needs, you know, to the best of our, you know, ASD abilities? There's a lot of ways to hold herself accountable. We can do it by the data. That's one way. But I think our kids, their well-being, their, how do they leave us? Where do they go next? You know, are they successful? Are their needs met? Are they having all of the opportunities that they want? What else can we provide? You know, are we being fair? Are we being equitable? Asking all of these questions, but not just answering it, you know, a little bit. It's having them, having our students is a part of the conversation. I loved what you asked earlier, you know, should we have more student voices? Absolutely. I spent time today with the SAB board, you know, having that conversation, that their voices are so important. And oftentimes, you know, when I'm down talking to legislators, they want to listen to the students, not to us. They know what we're going to say. They want to hear from the students, from all of you. And I just want to do everything I can to empower your voices, to make sure that you know that your voice carries a lot of weight. And we're not to be afraid of. We want to hear from you. So I don't know if I have Elisa Vakalis. I'm running for my third term in CG. Thank you for a wonderful, wonderful night. Just didn't know if I got any more time after this, two minutes.
Thank you. And now we are moving to Carl Jacobs. You have two minutes to answer.
Yeah, great question. And it's definitely one of the catalysts for me choosing to run, for CG specifically. Over the last year, I've listened closely to school board meetings. I have heard, seen concerned parents wait in students, waiting hours to provide verbal testimony to the board, indicating that they didn't feel listened to or included in ASD processes. And we've heard from our educators that they haven't felt heard. They've had to file grievances against the district, which is an extreme step, which shouldn't ever occur if we have a, a two-way relationship. And so I think there's a lot of engagement that needs to occur. There's a lot of accountability that needs to occur. And that needs to be amongst the board, that needs to be between the folks who are elected to those positions in the community as well. A great example is attending local community council meetings. A great example is attending local community council meetings. We, every school board member is assigned a set of community council meetings. The current incumbent for CG hasn't always been at those. And that's a key way, especially during a pandemic that's once in a generation level, to connect with parents, hear those concerns, identify things that need addressing. And that's just surface level engagement. If we're only worrying about those and not meeting with with groups, we have failed. And we need to do so much more than that even. So in closing, I guess I would say that we need to bring back more accountability to the board in the form of, there was at one point a log which tracked not only just school board meeting attendance, but community council meeting attendance. I would like to even make those meetings mandatory and include other groups into the rotation for what board members are expected to attend is the role of the board shouldn't just be to participate in governance twice a month at board meetings and then subcommittee meetings, but should also be reaching out to the community. Plenty of groups gather. We have an obligation to represent the folks that we serve, but we can't do that when we're not informed. And I think that's why we've seen so much of so many struggles over the past year. So thank you very much for the question. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now we will be moving to seat B, starting with Mark and Denny Cox.
Thank you so much. So step one is going to be it's who you choose to lead you. If you've considered going to all of these forums and listening to us as candidates, just make sure that you're picking someone that falls in line with what you believe will propel you. Because I'm not just talking to you students, I'm talking to the voters, who are your parents and your grandparents or whatnot. We have all of our personal identities outside of this race, but I hope when you get the chance to look at these candidates' resumes, that they fall in line with what you hope to see advocate for you. What I have as a benefit for me is my age being less than 10 years out of high school, being real fresh when it comes to the ASD environment and being one of those they consider disadvantaged communities, but making that pretty clean. And it wasn't by myself. It was the support of others. And so I want to propel you by being that support for others. That's what we do. We reciprocate what was given to us. And so as someone who is now a father and who is many other things as well, I make it a position and a point to, for this not to be a political thing. This is something that you need. You need someone who has been where you're at so that they can advocate for you efficiently. Now, when it comes to new age things, the tech savvy things we could do, Google Calendar, really easy. You get to pick a 15-minute block and you can contact me and you can contact any of your other candidates. Those are one of those things I would propose because that's something that was low cost, but it shows the initiative that we're actually there for you. So like I said, transparency before availability and flexibility. And in closing, I'd like to leave you with this. My name is Mark Anthony Cox and I'm your vote for seat B. B as in Bravo Boy or even blessing. I stand for high quality education that is reaching. I want you to graduate so smart that private students are switching back to public education. Speaking of the education, I believe that there are ways that we can improve your education. So you will need to know reading, writing, and math, but with a chance like no starting business and having cash. Yeah. These are the things that I know you'd like to know. But first you need a school board member that can represent you. So tell your friends, family, everyone that you know, vote for Mark Anthony Cox, anchor school board, seat B as in Bravo, on time.
Thank you. And next we will be going to Kelly Lessons. You have two minutes.
I'm following that again. This is this is rigged. Thank you so much for a great evening, great questions. I appreciate them all. So how can I hold myself accountable to the students? So the reason that I'm running is that I want to build on the experience I've had advocating for students for the past two and a half years. I began this endeavor because I was tired of dealing with my kid who was hungry. I began to think about the kids who would actually be coming home hungry if they didn't finish their lunches. I learned that there are lots of ways that we can advocate for kids. We need to listen to them when they play. We need to listen to them when they mingle. We need to listen to them when they talk about somebody bullying. So advocacy begins with listening. And parents, teachers, school board members, they need to listen from the very beginning to the pre-kindergarten, from the pre-kindergarten levels all the way through 12th grade. We need to think about creative ways to do that listening. We can listen through students' own productions on social media. We can listen through the art that they produce that's being projected at the Anchorage Museum. There are stories that students are telling about their lives in those productions. We can do data. We can do surveys as part of this recess and lunch wellness initiative. When 8,000 students got a little more time to eat, a little more time to play, we brought in a fancy researcher from Harvard who started surveying our third graders. And lo and behold, when they had more time to eat, they were less hungry and they were happier at a statistically significant level. We can use that information to make ourselves accountable in the long run to out to plan the policies and allocate resources to make sure our students have what they need to succeed. And we needed to find that success as whatever it is that's going to launch kids down the paths they need to become confident, culturally relevant, and sensitive citizens.
Thank you. Next, we will be moving to Marilyn Stewart. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. And I believe what we do make a difference. And we must decide what kind of difference we want to make. And I plan to work hard to get the best possible results for all of our students. I want it to be where we look at our students, that we don't judge them. We don't see color. We don't see gender. We don't see none of that. Our main priority is roll up our sleeve and to educate our kids. I know firsthand what racism can be. I know firsthand what discrimination is like. I lived it. I was born in the South, you know, I was during school integration, the civil rights era. And I learned firsthand, I learned firsthand the potential opportunities and possibilities when all of our children are given an opportunity to learn. And that should be our main priority on the school board. When I'm on that school board, my main priority will be to ensure safety as number one, education achievement, and zero tolerance for discrimination and bullying. So my name is Marilyn Stewart and I will be honored and humble to run in for the Anchor School Board, seat B, and to represent our students. Thank you. And thank you for having me join you this evening.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to CE, starting with Pat Higgins. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I think this is the most important question you can ask because I believe everyone here wants good outcomes for students. I think everyone here cares about public education. I accept that. I won't dispute it. The question is, how are you going to contribute to improving public education? What are you going to do as a school board member that's going to be different because you're a school board member than if you weren't on the school board? How are you going to change outcomes? On September 13th, on 2010, I put together proposals, goals that went to the school board. They included increasing career technology, changing the budget process to focus upon education. Such things as differentiated instruction. So we help kids that are behind as well as keep kids who are ahead moving forward. We had a lot of issues. We implemented purchasing policy changes to save $300,000 to $500,000 a year, every year thereafter. The board played a role and I feel like my position there, I pushed together objectives and goals that the board unanimously adopted, not with the support of the administration that made a difference for kids. And we put together higher goals than what the administration wanted and we got higher results. The question I think that everyone here needs to recognize when they vote is will that two board member make a difference? If we get elected, we have the audit committee to look over curriculum. We've got to focus on those problems to get education results up. We can't, we recognize as a problem, we can't be silent. We have to recognize that we do everything possible in our capacity as a board member to get better results. It's not just caring about kids, it's doing something for them. It's listening to the public when they want the career technology expanded. It's listening to kids when it came to everyday math and that was failing. It's listening to the teachers and the staff that were reinforcing the everyday math problem. We need to listen and we need to act and you have to have an agenda and a goal and you got to make it work. And that makes a difference for kids. I'm Pat Higgins for CE. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will be going to Rachel Blakesley.
I love this question. And I think it's critical that student voices aren't just listened to, but they're actively sought and included in conversations and solutions about policies and decisions that directly impact them. Students are literally the largest stakeholders in education. And I personally think this might be a bold idea. I think it would be awesome if we had elected student representatives on the school board so that maybe they weren't necessarily voting members, but students have the most tangible and invaluable insight into what is and is not working when it comes to education because they're the ones receiving it. And their opinions, I think, should be incorporated into those decision-making processes by literally having a seat at the table in order to create outcomes that benefit all of them. And so I don't think there's any right reason why we wouldn't be able to, we shouldn't be able to provide students literally a seat at the table. I think in addition to that, I'd love to see the creation of more student advisory groups comprised of students from across the district to advise on policy development and implementation and provide recommendations. You know, groups that are truly representative of the whole district and diverse. And I think also in addition to that, we need to create more informal opportunities for for students to engage with the school board, like an online hub where students can ask questions and get answers back and see what other questions have been asked and really channeling social media and the power of technology in a greater way. And I also think that school board members should be available to students frequently, not just leaving it to students to approach them, but being in classrooms, being available for coffee chats, proactively seeking out student input and going to to ask consistently for for that input on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Edgar Blanchard.
Well, thank you very much for that very, very good question. How would I seem or hold myself accountable? I think what I would do is to work with the school board as a team member because no one person can set the vision for the Anchorage School District. It has to be set by the board. And it is up to the administration to fulfill that vision. I would like the administration to be feel confident that the school board is working in the best interests of everyone, all the students, all the teachers, the administration, the community. I would like to be a part of that team that's willing to work together. How will I know when I am being held accountable and I feel accountable to the people of Anchorage? That's when I can sleep, when I can sleep comfortably at night and not worry about the people on the homeless and the thousands and thousands and thousands of people that have not been able to get the jobs that thousands of people from the lower 48 take from Alaskans. I don't know whether the employers don't feel confident in hiring Alaskans, but I want to make sure that our high school graduates are competent to be fully employed in tourism, in fishing, in construction, in oil and gas, and to have the confidence to go off to college or to vocational school or into the military. I will know when I am successful, when I can sleep at night and when I see more Alaskans take the jobs that the 80-some-thousand non-resident workers take from Alaskans while Alaskans walk the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Alicia Hill. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name's Alicia Hildy and I just want to mention that we do have a non-voting student member on our school board. So I know that's been hard to see because we've been on, she's been on Zoom this year, but she does provide an advisory vote for everything. But we are working to actually make that better, taking policies to that student advisory board to get their input before we we get to that vote, you know, official vote stage. We want to really and be intentional in going to the students to hear what they have and let them be in that deliberative process before you get to the finished product. Right? That's where the the voice part comes in. I've been focused on two-way communication, making sure we're not just, you know, saying, you better come testify and be on a microphone and on video. That's not comfortable for most people and it doesn't fit most people's schedule. We want to make sure we have this conversation opportunity. Zoom's a really cool way to do that. So you're going to see that with our anti-racism and equity policy that I've been leading through our governance committee and working a lot on, but then we can, you know, talk to understand and come to, you know, a better product, I think, when more people's inputs are in it, including students. In working with students, I go into the schools. I'm always in the schools I'm assigned to. I love getting to talk to the kids, which, whether it's in the lunchroom or if they're, you know, leading me on a tour and always just asking them, what do you think? What do you think should be happening? Because they provide just really honest feedback in a way that adults don't really always do. But then as a professional on the board, I'm looking at data to see who is succeeding, who is struggling. And and why are they doing that? We want more opportunities for student-directed learning when students get to take ownership of their learning. You know, that's one where we're accountable and we let them, you know, craft together. So we're seeing that in blended learning models. My focus is really on improving student learning. That's what I hope to continue to be doing on the board. And I hope you will consider me for a CE for your ballot. Thank you.
And lastly, we will be moving to seat F and we're going to be starting with Dora Wilson.
I'm a first-generation college student, college graduate. My parents did not have the opportunity, neither one of them, to graduate high school. But what we heard growing up was that education is the key to success. Education gives you choices. And so that's what I have focused on for our youth in our community, my own kids, my foster youth. The advocacy I do as a community outreach manager, I try to work to create opportunities. But those opportunities are based on needs. So we like to go to the students, to the community members, to community leaders to find out what those needs are because each element is really important. And it is a matter of reaching out. It is an opportunity for the school board to continually reach out to our students, reach out to our BIPOC communities, reach out to our LGBT communities, to reach out to all of our communities to get that input as to how that education can be improved, how we can create those opportunities for vocational technology, for skilled trades, for apprenticeship, how we can educate folks on what their choices are, how they get there. And that's all extremely important to me. I look forward to be able to being able to create opportunities and to listen to the youth and the community members and our community leaders to see what, how we can get there together. This is not, a partnership is never one way and we need more partnerships with our community. So I hope that I can earn your vote and I really, I look forward to building our community up. Whether or not you choose me for the board, that is okay. My work will not stop. I am running for seat F. Thank you again.
Thank you. And it looks like Marcus Sanders was dropped from the call due to connectivity issues. So we are going to Dan Loring.
You hear me now? Okay, great. And so my dog, Student Success, visited me for most of the meeting. He goes to Fairview Elementary School when they don't kick him out, but he's very successful. They won't let him take a test and all the students that they have let test, there's been zero students at Fairview Elementary School that have been proficient according to the Department of Education. How is that possible in a great city like Anchorage? Unbelievable. No, Alyssa, Alicia, I don't know you, Alicia. I think Alyssa's a very nice lady, but student outcomes have went down over the last three, four years, five years. The academic and human gap has went up. And you're just not getting the job done. You know, Kelly Lesson.
Okay, yeah, well, looks like that will conclude our school board candidate forum. And as as you heard, young people have brilliant questions to ask their leaders. So if you also, or we'd like to invite you to join us for another edition of Youth Ask on March 31st, 6:00 PM. This time, young people will be speaking to legislators about social justice issues. And it's a chance for anyone from high school and until mid-20s to have a small group conversation with lawmakers. And to have a small group of conversation with lawmakers and, you know, for the public to listen in. More details at akcentereducationfund.org/aya/ youthask and we'll be dropping links in the Zoom chat and on Facebook. And just a reminder, ballots were mailed out on Monday. So many of you may already have your ballots or will be receiving them soon. And Anchorage voters will be voting for all four school board candidate, or school board seats. Remember to return your ballot on or before April 6th. And we highly recommend you check out the municipal website for any election questions. Thank you all again for joining us tonight and have a great rest of your evening.